All right, so let's call to order the regular business meeting of the Board of Education for Monday, July 24th. To order, I can ask everybody to please stand and recite the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so roll call, please.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Pat Rudy.
Here.
Kevin Huber.
Here.
Karen Munstead.
Here.
Helen Maurer.
Here.
Scott Luce.
Mac Thurman.
Here.
Okay, so we note Scott Luce is absent for the record. Okay. Tonight's agenda, we will open up for public comment. I may have some comments in the president's report, we'll have the superintendent's report, a number of items listed there. On the consent vote agenda, we're going to make two changes to this agenda. Number one, item number B will be removed. We need to make some small edits to those minutes. And then we are also pulling item E. The contract that was posted indicated it would be approved in the August 28th meeting, so we will pull that and approve it in the next meeting. Let's see, then, program and personnel. There's a number of items listed there, updates from facilities and finance. There is no update from property. Anything on SEDO? Nothing I know of. Okay. Nothing from SEDO, IASB, nothing from them. And we'll have a brief executive session to discuss employment of an employee and semi annual review of the closed session minutes. Again, those, are there any comments on the closed session minutes?
That's actually number nine on my report, so we'll cover that in my report, Pat.
Okay. And that should be it. All right? No action after the executive session. All right? Okay. Public comment. Anybody like to speak? Yeah, I'd ask you to limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Evening, Board. William Kessler. There are two contracts that were to be approved, but if I understand you correctly, one of them just got pulled off, the superintendent's contract.
There's only one, is that true?
What about the construction manager's contract?
Oh, yeah.
Was that on for approval?
That is on for approval still, yep. That's an F and A.
I want to talk about both contracts. First, the superintendent's contract. I want to start by being very clear. My comments are about the process and not the person. You heard me say that before about contracts. I'm process oriented. We may very well have the very best person for the job, but I think the process is flawed. First of all, the superintendent's contract was on the consent agenda. I think it should be a matter for public discussion by the board. I don't think this is a contract that you should be doing without public discussion. It makes it look like the board's trying to slip something by the public when you don't talk about it. It's also being extended, when my understanding is it doesn't expire until June of 2018. So it was on for tonight, I didn't understand what the rush was. I still think August is too early. It's summer, I've been on the D-68 board now for six years, I know nobody shows up in the summer. It's a ghost town. Something this important, you might consider doing in October, there's still plenty of time. Second, it's a five-year extension. The public should understand why you're giving a very long extension, particularly with all the current circumstances and controversy. Again, it looks bad. If there's a reason for a five-year extension, just tell the public why it's a five-year extension. Next, you should tell the public what process you followed. Did you get staff feedback, teacher feedback, parent feedback, community feedback? I'm not aware of what process you followed. At 68, when we renewed a contract, we get feedback from all of those important groups. It's an important part of fulfilling your duty. Also, before you vote on the contract, it would be important to understand how much it costs. There's no disclosure of costs for the payments that are in section 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 14. There's no way of knowing what those payments are. You should at least have a ballpark if you can fix what those payments are today. Also, you should attach a complete copy of the contract to your board agenda. Right now, the contract's buried in all of those adobes, but you're missing the attachment. The attachment is the board goals for the superintendent. You can't vote on an incomplete contract. You need to have those goals attached, because when you vote on the contract, it says you're approving those goals. And in section 3, there's a general discussion of what those goals are. I would urge you to add financial goals. In section 3, you talk about student performance and academic performance, those are the only two standards. I think it's superintendent's responsibility to extend the fiscal responsibility for the district, building management, and administration of the staff. The contract has a huge retirement bonus in it. We eliminated retirement bonuses at 68 under the theory that why are you paying money to people walking out the door? Spend the money on people while they're here, give them performance bonuses, not retirement bonuses. Once they're gone, you don't get anything for your money, they're gone. The termination provisions of the contract should be reviewed with your school attorney. They're seriously flawed, there's no clear standard. There's a couple of fuzzy words in there about how you can terminate it, but there's no clear standard. The evaluation section in 26 doesn't mention financial performance again. That should be one of the criteria that you evaluate your superintendent on. The professional liability indemnification section is missing a carve-out for gross negligence and willful misconduct. You're indemnifying the superintendent for anything he does, even if he breaks the law, you're indemnifying him for it. That's very unusual. Finally, it automatically renews the contract, that's also very unusual. So what I've identified are problems in the process and in the contract itself. You've given yourself another month to fix it, I would hope you take another couple of months. And I want to close by saying, it's not about the person, it's about the process. So please don't take any comments I have as being in any way negative about the person. I may have just used up all my time talking about that contract, but briefly, I want to talk about the construction contract. I'm a construction lawyer, it's what I do. I write these contracts for a living. AIA contracts are what I do. So I took the time, oh, by the way, I did all five of the contracts for District 68 when we did a five-year building program. I read all 118 pages of this contract, there are mistakes in it that will cost this district money. So I would urge you not to approve it tonight. Take a month to fix these mistakes. I'm happy to go over them or send you an email identifying them, I don't want to take up your board meeting time, but a couple of highlights. The additional insured language in section 11.2.2 does not protect you individual board members. You should be specifically listed as additional insurers, so that you're not personally liable. The expenses section in 4.2.2 is way out of line. It has the district paying for the contractors' cell phones, laptops, iPads, bottled water, office supplies, internet service. This is all overhead you shouldn't be paying for. The price incentive is wrong. This is a fixed fee contract, but if it goes over the projected budget, the contractor gets a bonus of 1.75 percent. So what's his incentive? To hold costs down? No, get costs up, so I can earn a 1.75 percent bonus. The waiver of consequential damages in section 15.1.6 goes against the district. Only the district will have consequential damages if this project is not done right. Contractors not have consequential damages, so we shouldn't be waiving them as a district. If the work isn't done by February 19th, 2019, the contractor shifts to an hourly. And the hourly rates are pretty high in here, but most importantly, there's no requirement that the contractor give you timesheets. He's going to submit a bill saying, my hourly for this month is this number. He doesn't have any obligation to tell you how he got to that number. You should get timesheets. In section 6.1.2, the contractor can force the district to spend more money, and the district can't say no without a good reason. You shouldn't give the contractor the ability to force you to spend more money. In section 6.7.2, the district is obligated to pay the contractor's costs in preventing damage, injury, or loss due to an emergency. But there's no carve-out if the contractor itself created the emergency. It's appropriate for you to reimburse him, but not if he's the one who created it or it's the one who created the emergency. The district's obligated to pay the contractor's travel costs as stated in the contractor's written policy. Did you look at his written policy? I didn't see it posted. The district's paying the contractor's insurance costs in section 6.6.1, that's unusual, that's overhead. The contract properly strikes out mediation, mediation's terrible. In one section, you say if there's a dispute, you're going to litigate it, but then in section 15.3.2, you put mediation back in, so the contract's internally inconsistent. Either get rid of the mediation everywhere, or understand that mediation, at least in my 30 years of experience as a contract lawyer, construction lawyer, it's not good. The one-year warranty is defective. You've got a one-year warranty from the date of substantial completion. It should be one year from the date of substantial completion or the installation of an item. Let's say substantial completion's October 1, they don't install some piece of equipment until January 1, you only get a 10-month warranty on that piece. Plus, if they do repairs, you should get a one-year warranty on the repairs. If they repair something the day before the one-year expires and they do a crummy job, it's too bad, the way it's written. You should get a warranty book. Every contract I do requires the contractor at the end of the deal to put together all the warranties in a book and give it to the owner. The assignment by the contractor with subcontracts is a great idea, this is section 5.4.1.3, but it doesn't properly specify how the assignment's supposed to be done. Changes in the work are overpriced. Section 7.3.3 gives a 3 percent bonus on any change orders. That's too much. The lien waiver provision is unusual. Section 9.3.5 says the contractor doesn't have to give lien waivers for the first payout. Why not? There's nothing unusual about the first payout, there should be lien waivers on every payout. The representation and warranty section, I only have two more. The representation and warranty section, section 3.1.4 misses the most important rep that you can get, that the contract is legal, valid, and binding. That's a standard rep you get in every contract, but it's not in this one. Finally, the standard of care for the contractor's been changed in section 3.3.1, it's watered down. So the contractor has a lower standard of care than is normal. I don't know which attorney you had review this. If you had Len Himes do it, I think the world of Len, I think he's an excellent educational lawyer, but he's not a construction lawyer like I am. Contracts for this much money, it would behoove the district to go find a specialized lawyer who does that for a living and have them review the contract. I'm not saying you go do that on $100,000 contracts, but millions, multimillion dollar contracts, it would be worth the money to have it reviewed by a construction-specific lawyer. Thanks for giving me the extra time. And like I said, I'm going to write this up and send it in, so you don't have to watch the videotape and slow down and rewind all the time.
Taking notes, too, so.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Nice job.
Thank you. I think I could be an auctioneer in another life, too.
Hi there. Can I just?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Name and address, if you could.
Amy Hardy. I have children at LHS, 10th and 11th grade, going into 10th and 11th grade, 1310 Kristen Drive. As somebody who has 30 years' contracts experience, I strongly urge you to heed Mr. Lane's recommendations. Everything he said was completely on point with work I've done in the defense industry and agreements with high-level employee, or senior-level executives, CIVL-level executives and prior employer. But that's not why I'm here. The pool construction and the entrances closing for the pool construction and the back entrance are a monumental concern for me personally. I'm almost apoplectic, I have no idea what I'm going to do to get my kids to school in the next, actually, two school years. Having an older daughter, who is a senior in college, she rode the bus. I never took her. So this is unique to these children, it's not a matter of me being a parent who doesn't believe my children should get on the bus. Trying to get them to school to meet their teachers in a timely fashion and everything else in the mornings, they need lots of extra help, is critically important to me as a parent. I've paid for tutors and everything else at an exorbitant sum, and the way that they're putting the stop, or proposing to put the no stand, no stop orders in the schools around the Heritage Area in Dulles and elsewhere is going to shove the traffic out into those neighborhoods. I live up north Butterfield North, I have no idea how I'm going to get to work, and I have time commitments to get to work, my employer expects us to be there a certain time. I don't know where the decision came from to close the back gate. I'm not convinced the, I believe we should do a better job upfront figuring out how to solve the parking and ingress and egress issues before we just say, all right, we're going to drop $20 million on a pool that has seats 500 people and has 40 parking spaces. The issue is so big, and you're sticking it out into the community that's done a tremendous job supporting the district, and I would like to see more consideration of the board and the management of the school instead of shoving the problem back on the school and the parents. So, can you tell me who made the decision, or how that happened, or if it can be changed?
Did you get the email today?
No.
That Dr. Conntis sent out from?
No.
LHS.
Ah.
Well, it goes through the whole process, and if it's okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
The school's been working for about six months with the Village of Libertyville, including the police department in terms of traffic management. And so, at the end of that discussion, the recommendation from that crew was that the back gate will be used by students, seniors who have parking stickers and who will be parking in the back in a regular senior lot. That your daughters may have not used, particularly an older one, because she rode the bus, like my oldest daughter did, coming in. And so those students will come in the back gate, they will simply park, get out of their cars, and get out of the way and get in the building. And then the main entrance will be used for the balance of drop-off. As you know with the pool construction, well, as you may know with the pool construction, the road that comes from the back park, it faculty park in the back lot, of course, exclusively. The road that goes around where the, kind of the pool in the west gym is on the end will have to be closed off for construction, so we will lose space there that contain cars during the day. If you have ever driven that way and come out, it will hold, let's say, 30 additional cars, and they come out one at a time. I've done that for several years with my own girls, that go to school there. And that entrance, at the west entrance, will eventually be redone, but will have to be closed off because that's where the construction of the pool is going to take place. So, the village and the police department, really experts in moving traffic, were involved with the staff at Libertyville in terms of, you know, kind of coming up with a plan for what is going to be a challenging couple of years there on a campus where we're landlocked. And so that's where the decision came from, on the flow of the traffic and where people will park.
Thank you. Still monumentally a huge problem going down 176, all those people trying to go east on 176 from under line and everywhere else. I don't think this is an acceptable solution and should have been addressed before a pool was decided on. So, thank you, but I'm disappointed.
Bear with me, I've got neuropathy and it's tough.
Yeah, sit down, Jerry.
I'm glad to be back.
Nice to see you, Jerry.
My name is Jerry Burbay, and I live at 3009 Cary Hill Circle in Libertyville. I had seen the agenda, or I had seen one major item on the agenda, which was item number E, Superintendent Prentice's E, contract renewal. I want to go to record and say we're not, I'm not, and I think an awful lot of the taxpayers are not in favor of that renewal at this point in time. Nothing against the product, nothing against Prentice, but you've got a lot of cloudy issues on the table, the indictments. This is not the time. Wait until those are settled, held, cleared, then you want to consider renewing the contract, a very large contract? Fine, look at it then. I applaud, I applaud, Benny?
Lane.
Lane. My God, he took the words right out of my mouth. That's a big contract, and if it is renewed for five years, and things don't work out, and there's other things that happen, it will cost us probably a million, million and a half to buy him out. Wait. Wait until this thing is cleared, cleared, everything is out in the open, and then go forward on something like this. But, please, not now. That's it. I do applaud this guy back here. When I tell you what, if he sits and he looks at a contract with his background skills, I'd say hire him. Put him on your staff and let him work with us and with, for us. It sounds like he can save us a lot of money. Thank you.
Anybody else?
All right.
So that brings it to me. Let me make a few comments on some of the comments that were made. Actually, we'll have a broader discussion, I think, on the contractor's contract, we'll get to F and A, is that right? That's a number of issues that we have to discuss. Let me make a couple of comments, though, on the superintendent's contract. We pulled that today, because, number one, there's a statement in there on the date that it's going to be approved, which is next month, so we want to be consistent with that. Number two, let me make it perfectly clear, and I've spoken to at least the majority of the board members, this board's in full support of Dr. Lee. We know there are issues going on. I'm not able to comment on those at this time because they're ongoing matters, but let there be no doubt that we are fully in support of renewing Dr. Lee's contract. Okay?
My question is, how many of board members have to say yes to approve it?
The majority. So, four of seven.
Which is? Four?
Four of seven. Yeah, okay. So, but let there be no doubt.
Who requested a five-year extension?
We're not going to get into a dialogue on it. I don't know who requested a five-year extension, but let me be clear on the timing and why I believe it's important. Okay? Right now, Dr. Lee has one year left in his contract. Okay? That, I think, for the board creates two issues that we want to resolve. All right? One, we're going into teacher negotiations in the fall, and I know myself and I think some others that I've spoken to, we would certainly prefer to go into those negotiations with a superintendent that is under contract beyond the current school year. All right? And I anticipate those discussions will probably start early this fall. Okay? The second thing is more of, I'm going to call it a selfish reason on the part of this board. If Dr. Lee were to retire, he needs to notify us in September of the year before he retires. Okay? In the absence of a contract which gives him some level of reassurance that he will be retained by this board, that would put him in a situation where in September of this year, he may need to make that decision. Okay? I believe it's important to retain him to take that issue off the table. Okay? So practically speaking, at least from our, I think, our perspective, I think those are two of the key issues that are making this a situation that we would like to complete. Okay?
Well, on the contract that would be renewed, he is going to have financial responsibility. I was appalled just to listen and hear that he had no responsibility financially.
Jerry, that would not be true, that would not meet the expectations I think this board has of him. Okay? And I don't remember the details.
Just for the evaluation.
Yeah, is it in the, I think it is in the evaluation. I don't remember the detailed items on the evaluation process, but my recollection vaguely, things like it's part of that review. Don't let anybody lead you to believe that we don't hold him accountable directly for the financial stewardship of the resources in this district. Okay? I mean, it's just not true. All right? Okay, so, we will have further discussion on that tonight in closed session. I'd also like to highlight that, given that there's been some perception that this is something that is simply brought forward in this consent vote agenda, we've had no fewer than two meetings on this topic in closed session, we've discussed it in detail, and we expect to finish those discussions in the closed session tonight. Okay? Any other comments on that? All right. You know, I think one comment with respect to the parking, I mean, let it be noted, we've taken that issue very seriously. I don't think I'm going out on a limb saying, we've made the best decision we can based on a large number of meetings addressing that topic. I'm assuming that going forward, if it doesn't work, we're going to figure out what's going to work better. Okay? I mean, to me, it's kind of that simple. I realize it's an inconvenience, I got to tell you something, quite honestly, and this is just my own, I've about had it with the pool, personally. If we don't want the pool, we can pull the damn pool. Okay? I know we don't want to do that. Okay? But honestly, I've heard more complaints about the decision since we decided to build the pool than I actually heard before we were trying to make the decision to build the pool. Okay? So if the people in Libertyville don't want the pool, we can reopen the issue. All right? But I'm not so sure that's what the majority of the people in this community want, based on over three years of studying this problem. Okay? So, I got a lot of confidence that we've tried to work with traffic professionals to make the best decision we can. All right? I mean, I've even heard people say, we're not making decisions in the best interest of this community. Well, let the record be clear that there aren't any of the seven of us that are in any way, shape, or form benefiting of this personally. So if we're not doing it in the interest of the community, I'm honestly not sure who we're doing it in the interest of. Okay? So, my own opinion is, I think we've studied it thoroughly, we've consulted people who are skilled in these matters, we've made the best decision we know to make at this point, and we'll look and see how it works once we do it. Not unlike many decisions that we make, we have to make adjustments as we learn more. Okay? And so I think that's where we're at with the pool. Okay? All right. So, that takes us to the superintendent report, which appropriately starts with good news.
Well, and even in the summer, we do have good news. The District 128, the future Business Leaders of American National Leadership Conference was held June 29th to July 2nd in Anaheim, California. Thirty-seven VHHS FBLA club members were among the 12,000 students who attended the conference, competed in leadership events, shared successes, and learned new ideas about shaping their careers through workshops and exhibits. National honors were received by the following VHHS students. Michael Kokinas, Oliver Lang, and Derek Jiang. Marketing finished in second place in the United States. Aparajja Adaraju, Ashwini Deshpandi, and Pavani Pandaravada. Were emerging business issues, were eighth place in the nation. VHHS FBLA advisors are Tony Isabella, Sean Woody, and Diane Phillips. So congratulations to those students and their advisors. LHS chemistry teacher Sherry Rooks received the 2017 American Chemical Society Division of Chemical Education Region Award for Excellence in High School Chemistry Teaching for the ACS Great Lakes Region. The award's purpose is to recognize, encourage, and stimulate outstanding teachers of high school chemistry in the ACS regions. Sherry received the honor in June at the ACS Great Lakes Regional Meeting in Fargo, North Dakota. So, congratulations to Sherry, who's once again recognized for her excellence in teaching. LHS student parking, we just wanted to follow up from last month, and I think communication went out to parents and students at 5:00 today after review from the village regarding traffic flow, parking at LHS. And the village has, again, worked cooperatively and in good spirit with us to find an alternative for parking. They are going to let us use the Butler Lake area parking for our juniors who need to find a place to park. In the fall, we're very appreciative of those efforts. Scott, board member Scott Luce, and our Director of Buildings and Grounds, Mark Koopman, are actually at the village plan commission meeting tonight, going through phase one, two, and three of the pool construction projects. But we want to thank Mayor Weppler, the village trustees, and the village staff, again, for working with us on accommodating parking for next year. If that is to be renewed the following year, we'll have additional conversations with the village in order to do that in the future, so that will allow us enough parking spaces for our juniors who might normally compete for parking at the Brainerd lot next year. Detachments, sent the board a message this afternoon, but we got some good news, at least now, on detachments. The Daybreak Farms detachment, Len Himes and Scarianno argued that case on our behalf. Our behalf being District 128, Warren Township High School District, Oak Grove District 68, and Woodland District 50, who are all part of that detachment. Daybreak Farms is seeking to detach from Warren and Woodland and come into District 68, and then 128 is the high school district. So, they were in court in the last few days. Judge Winter, who is hearing the case, will provide a written ruling in the near future. And the impetus of that case was really what rule of law that detachment And the impetus of that case was really what rule of law, that detachment law that that was heard under. The old law, or the more current law that we worked collaboratively together on a couple of years ago to get passed in the legislature and the governor's signature in Springfield. So we're hopeful that the judge will rule that the case should be heard under the new law when she gives us our ruling. That has an impact on how that case is heard at the regional board. The regional board had previously agreed that the case should be heard under the new law. So the judge will weigh in on that, and we have several other detachments that are kind of in play like that. So that's our update on detachments right now.
Just as clarification, Judge Winter's not always the fastest. The last trial I had in front of her ended in September. She didn't give me my ruling until the end of January. So when she says shortly, maybe four or five months.
So we're hoping for a quicker resolution that you've experienced in the past, but when the case is in abeyance until the judge actually rules on it, and then depending on the ruling, you know, it could be back to the regional board to actually go through that process. So we circumvented a lot of time at the regional board by the regional board actually indicating that they believed it should be heard under the new law moving forward. So we will see, and of course, we'll keep the board updated on those as they move forward. We mentioned the LHS pool project again at the Plan Commission. That's the next step in the process to move the pool project forward. Five on my report is the Brainerd Memorial update, and we'll have an additional report in FNF on this, but the Brainerd Memorial bids went out. They actually came in underbid, and so that's good news for that project. So we'll be awarding that bid, and we can move forward with the construction of that memorial, which, again, will bring some of the accoutrements, if you will, from the old building into that memorial, and it'll be right kind of on the triangle part of the property by where the Brainerd field is. So that's good. Illinois 100th Legislature, right now, the governor, as you may be aware, the governor has called the legislators back on Wednesday on education, just to make sure that the community is aware, even though a budget has been passed, the governor vetoed the budget that was overwritten in the House and the Senate, so we have a budget. As part of that budget, the money that would be allocated to public schools is being held in abeyance until a new funding formula is passed. Senate Bill 1, better known as an evidence-based model, is actually a grassroots model that came from educators. The Alliance Management in the state has been modified several times along the way. That bill was passed in the House and the Senate, and it's currently being held. The governor has indicated that he would either veto that bill, or he would mandatorily veto that bill and send it back to the legislature over a couple of issues with Chicago Public Schools, which include a pension pickup for the Chicago teachers and/or roughly $250 block grant for Chicago. So as we approach the beginning of school in this state, there are many, many districts in this state who have a great reliance on state funding for public schools, who may not be able to open, or can open, and may not be able to stay open long moving forward. So we're hoping that will come to some compromise between the legislature and the governor in short order, because some schools will open in three weeks in this state, you know, as we get into the middle of August, including us, by the way. So we'll keep the board and, as best we can, the community updated on that. But that's certainly hanging out there. We had three FOIA requests this month. Just take a minute to read those into the record. We had a FOIA request on 7/3/17 from Ted Prilman, who requested all evidence from LHS that had conducted its parking lottery, either in a format that was open to the public or was overseen by an unbiased third-party auditing entity such as Deloitte and/or CBIZ. The names of the 300 students at LHS who were given the opportunity to purchase an annual inside parking spot, and the names of the 76 students who were not given that opportunity. Follow-up responsibility was Bryant's, and we responded to that FOIA request on 7/11/17 and spent approximately three hours on that request. On 7/10, we received a FOIA request from Tom Johns, who is Tim Johns, a researcher from NBC5 Chicago. And Mr. Johns requested documents sufficient to show the employment of all certified athletic trainers for any school and/or department of District 128 which participates in any IHS activity or sport. Two, all monthly reports prepared and/or submitted by schools and/or departments within District 128 relating to student athletes who have sustained concussions during the 1617 school year. Bryant had the response to respond, and we responded on 7/11/17. And finally, on 7/19/17, we received a FOIA request from WFF Facility Services, Mark Sullivan, National Sales and Marketing Manager in St. Louis, Missouri. One, existing contract between the district and Ermarch for custodial maintenance and ground services. And two, Ermarch proposal from the last bid for services described above. Dan Stanley and Rose DeCicco had the responsibility to respond, and that response is due on 7/26/17, and we will be responding to that shortly. Okay? So those are our FOIA requests. Also on the agenda, superintendent's report tonight is our annual EDRED renewal invoice. EDRED is the suburban school district lobbying organization. District 128 has a long history with EDRED. As our board knows, I do a lot of legislative work on behalf of the district. EDRED is, and has been and continues to be, a really important partner of suburban Chicago school districts. So of course, I would recommend that we renew that contract, and we would need a motion and a vote to do so.
I make a motion that we renew the EDRED contract at the amount of $500.
Second? That's right here. EDRED membership.
I queued it up over my time.
Yeah, there you go.
Continuing, sorry.
Okay, we got a second, right? Okay.
All right, any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
That's okay.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And next, we have semi-annual review of closed session meetings, and after review of the minutes, it's our recommendation that we do not release any specific minutes at this point. And depending on what the board determines to do here, if you agree with that recommendation, concur with it, then we would not need to discuss that matter in closed session tonight.
That's fine.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the remaining, that we approve the closed session minutes to remain closed at this time until February 26th.
Second?
Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Okay, Pat, that concludes the superintendent's report.
All right. I'm going to back up one second to just highlight, I want to make a few final comments back on this contract, Jerry. If you review this contract, you'll see there's a number of reasons why this is a good thing for us to do. Okay? First of all, the contract, the superintendent's contract, okay? Number one, you guys specifically asked us to take a number of actions, finance that and a number of things. You will note in this contract two things. Okay? Number one, even though Dr. Lee is under contract for this academic year, this new contract restates his salary for this current year at a lower number than what is in his current contract.
Why?
Because that's what we agreed to, as we agreed to establish.
We, the board, agreed to that?
We haven't approved it yet, but that is what we have negotiated with Dr. Lee. Okay? Number two, you will note that the increases going forward are linked to the CPI, okay, or 1% or 1.5%. Okay?
What's Social Security?
I don't know what Social Security is, but I believe you. But I mean, again, I think in all honesty, that is a pretty, that's a pretty tight contract relative to many that are going on in the industry. So we've, you know, worked very collaboratively with Dr. Lee to negotiate what I think are financial terms that are well in the best interest of the district. Okay? Last but not least, you know, again, I mentioned the full support of this board for Dr. Lee, acknowledging that there are some issues going on, but if you look at the financial performance of the district, including his wholehearted support of the $18 million of abatements we've done over the last year, if you look at the academic performance of this district, if you look at what he's done to recruit an extremely talented staff that we continue to renew, if you look at what he's done with his staff to foster a culture of diversity within our two high schools at a time where that was very important for us to do, and you look at a number of the other achievements that we've done under his tenure, I hope you'll see it the way I think we see it, which is, this is a person we want to keep as long as we can keep.
Pat, I'm not questioning that. That's yours to make the judgment, but I'm telling you, if the contract says that he's responsible for no financial, and I didn't see it in the contract, I would hope the next contract says-
Yeah, the contract does say that he's helped the performance.
I'm still looking for something from the finance side of the house that says, "We're closing out this year. We spent X. We should have spent Y. We've got a surplus." What is the-
Hold on, we're not going to open up the discussion. Honestly, Jerry, we're going to review the budget in more detail in the meeting on-
On 7.
Seven. Okay? We've had one session, and nobody showed up. Okay? You're more than happy to come on the 7th. Dan's put together some really nice reports that make it very clear, very readable. I hope you're there. Okay? Happy to go there.
You know what I'm interested in? I'm interested in that bottom line, what's our surplus?
We're with you. Okay? All right.
Can I just make a couple of comments? First of all, Pat is correct, and actually, I brought the concept up to the board several years ago about if we were at a point of renewal, if the board wanted me to stay, and I certainly wanted to finish a possible in my career in the district, I actually broached the issue of looking at a 1.5% factor back when we were trying to predict inflation, when it was, you know, bobbing between .7 and 2.0 in terms of doing that, and CPI moving forward. And there were a number of reasons that I believe that was important to do. Secondly, and Ellen has indicated this before, there is an evaluation instrument. When I was hired as a superintendent, there was an evaluation instrument that Ellen worked on and Ann Langraff worked on, and then the board approved that goes with my contract. I'm evaluated on that model every year, and as Ellen has already indicated, there's a financial component within that evaluation in my contract that I go through, you know, with the whole board in terms of that. So I am more than happy to do a CPI-based raise, and I just want to note that most of the other raises in the district are pegged to the teacher contract, which overall is 3.5%. And so I'm happy to do the 1.5% and CPI moving forward, because I think it's important for me to do that as a superintendent in, you know, the last few years that I may work. So.
Okay. All right. Let's move on. Go ahead. If you can keep it brief, just so I don't want to derail my own agenda here.
Just a quick comment. It's not one to debate.
Yeah.
I didn't speak earlier, but the one thing I suggest, and first of all, I applaud you for taking the spirit of what we talked about, kind of saving money. Both you and Prentice are working that out, you know, so if it's less, that's a good sign. And I know it takes some negotiation. But one thing I would encourage the board to do, and it's a very touchy one, and I'm not sure how you do it, is more needs to be said when people understand what you're doing, because of all the stuff going on, it's not pleasant. There's a lot more scrutiny going on with the board and the public. The more you can tell all the things that are happening to try to work through that and somehow let people know the good things you're doing relative to these very sensitive subjects, the easier your job will be.
Okay, so I'll make one quick comment on that, and then we will move on. So there are matters ongoing. I have not commented on those publicly. Okay? Certainly not because I wouldn't want to, but because they are ongoing legal matters, we want them to run their full course. Okay? When they do, we'll have something to say. Okay? I mean, it's not our intent to not be transparent, it just wouldn't be appropriate to comment on an ongoing legal situation. Okay? Okay. All right.
So that concludes my report.
Thank you.
I think-
And that concludes mine as well. Okay? All right, we're going to stay focused now. All right. All right. So the consent vote agenda, again, I want to highlight, we're going to remove item B, just to make some minor edits to those minutes, and as we've talked at some length, we're going to eliminate item E. Okay? Everything else has also been discussed in committee, so can I ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda with the exception of items B and E?
I vote to approve the consent vote agenda, leaving item B and E.
Is there a second? Okay, any discussion? All right, if not, roll call, please.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Program Personnel Chair Person Mauer.
Okay, first, we have board policy for review, a second reading and adoption. Policy 7, 100, Hoffman I examinations, invasions, and exclusion of students. This is the second reading for this. There have been no changes since the first reading. Does anyone have questions about the changes? If not, I'd ask for a motion to approve, to adapt, to approve the second reading and adoption of this board policy.
I vote to approve Policy 7, colon, 100, for a second reading and adoption.
Second?
All right. You got it. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, item B, we have a resolution that we need to adopt to regulate expense reversements for board, and that involves Policies 2, colon, 125, and 560, and this would be a yearly adoption. So we're looking for approval to adapt this resolution as presented. So move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Motion carries.
Next, we've got an educational tour request for the journalism convention for the students. Looking for a motion to approve that request.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, next, we have the Mastery Manager, the Gold Star Learning Renewal Contract, and we're looking to renew that contract for the next three years, so in the amount of $20,736.50 for each of the next year, 2017, 2018, and 2019. Looking for a motion to approve that.
So move.
Move second. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
thirty-five thousand one hundred fifty-six dollars and fifty cents for the second year, and thirty-six thousand two hundred eleven dollars and nineteen cents for the third year. So looking for a motion to approve that contract as presented and discussed earlier.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Batson?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Huber?
Aye.
Lundstedt?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Thurman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Seeing that there are no others, I mean, we haven't the other. So that includes program and personnel.
Thank you. Facilities and Finance Chair and Batson.
So the first item on the agenda is the pool project construction management contract.
So I'd say make the motion, and then once that discussion.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve the LHS pool project construction management contract as presented and discussed earlier.
Sir, second.
Okay.
Discussion. I'll just go on record, I think Mr. Hasler made some very good points, first and none of which I'm able to really opine on. So I'm open to input from those who could put it into the right perspective there.
Rick, do you have any thoughts?
Well, I was asked to review the contract, and I haven't reviewed it, so I'm assuming the Scariano firm did, but I don't know.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, we've had no less than four attorneys review it, is my understanding. Is that right? Two of ours, two of theirs, or two of ours and one of theirs, maybe it's three?
I don't know, people, but you got three firms involved.
Okay.
On our side, two firms, one Scariano, and a team there, and then Click the Liability Cooperative that were part of their legal team as well. Pretty nitpicky from my understanding. And just in trying to, you know, take notes, and I don't mean to pick apart anything that was said, I was trying very fast and trying to understand. I was able to kind of try to look in a couple of these, a couple of things. You know, I don't even, I don't want to present to be a construction attorney or anything like that, but I think some of the issues that were raised, I don't know that I see necessarily the same thing in a cursory review. Just a few of the things I've, you know, tried to write down, in fact, we did talk very fast. So, I mean, these are things I'm interested in understanding more. I couldn't tell you, I don't have the things memorized, but in reviewing the documents, for example, just one of them. So the first one that I was able to write down was about what warranties are made and who, you know, that the board isn't mentioned as who's going to be protected and named as additionally insured. It's correct that that part does not mention the board, but what that part is, is if we are going out to get another service, it's telling what we are going to ensure on the contractor, not the board. So we're going to protect the contractor's employees and blah, 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 so they don't have a board as a contractor. It's referencing the contractor, not us. So that's why it's not going to mention the Board of Education being protected, because it's talking about the other one being covered. There's another one mentioned of six point seven two that, about conflicts, that if emergency situation is created, and it doesn't reference if the contractor is the one that makes the emergency. It is correct that it doesn't say that in six point seven point two, but in six point seven point two, it references section ten point four. And in ten point four, it talks about making claims and everything in emergencies that, meaning if you got an emergency, you can deal with it. But then in ten point four point one, the one right next, it says if the contractor, meaning the district is allowed to make, do some stuff, but if the contractor is liable, by action or inaction, they're liable for it. They're liable for the cost. And even, there's a whole section about even costs and the process to go through that and everything. There's a few other things that I was just able to kind of look. The mediation was removed, but was it brought back in? I don't see that it was brought in, because we blocked, we brought, we eliminated a line that says, the base contract says both parties will endeavor to mediate. That line was removed, and just basically, I think the paragraph that's left over is if you end up mediating, which we won't, but if you do, then these are the steps you're going to follow if you end up mediating. So again, that is just like really brief, trying to just kind of reference. So I'm happy to look at the individual concerns, try to understand. But again, in talking to the, especially on the risk side, like the district at risk for a loss, that has been very thoroughly examined and reviewed and everything from the Click side. And I, yeah, I mean, we talked about it, and I know we talked about it in FNF as well. And Scariano as well, reviewing it, their team as well, so.
And this review has gone on?
No, it's gone on for months.
For months and months and months.
It's been passed back from one or from each other, and we have two of the firms.
Rick, just a question. Is it possible for the board to do a contingent approval tonight tied to a final review by our counsel of any of the questions that have been raised? I mean, is that?
So we're going to have to wait until?
Legal, so if Len?
Well, I suppose you can do it. I guess that's not really an approval, then.
Okay, all right, so, well, that answers the question. It's not an approval, that's, I guess, the real base question there.
What about, is there a, if we're meeting on the seventh, is there a way? I mean, first of all, I guess I just would ask for a sanity check between you two guys, knowing much you heard. I mean, there were some, I thought it was actually very thorough view.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, I give him a lot of credit for that. Is it worth considering that we do, because he'll either give us the list, or we can get it off the tape, run those by Len, and get his specific feedback on those, and maybe bring it back as early as the seventh, so we don't wait?
I would guess we would have to run it by Click as well.
Well, again, I think I'm looking for?
Opinion on the comments made, not a complete review of the contracts that are, but an opinion of the comments that were made.
And what does that timing do to where we stand?
Yeah, what's the downside of the time?
We're going out to bid, so we don't have any bids yet. It's not like we've got to shovel in the ground.
The downside is, I mean, depending on who you are, a negative on Gilbain, not that I'm trying to necessarily argue for Gilbain, but negative on them is they don't get paid until there's a contract.
I thought they're getting paid now as we go, though. They're still getting some pay or not.
They might be as it relates to pre-construction work, but all the other stuff, so that's, from what my understanding is, is a big thing. As far as delaying, you know, I don't necessarily know those implications, if there's stuff relating to timing of, are they going to be sending out the bid documents and doing all that stuff? I mean, I'm sure they're a professional company, they're going to still be working with us and engaging, you know, I mean, they're not going to stop their work.
I don't see the contracts at risk, although one of the things you mentioned, which I happened to see when I scrolled through it, was we had specifically asked the Gilbain guys to cap what their fees were, because we were not comfortable with the fact that if the price of steel goes up again, they're going to get paid more money.
Correct, you do have a fixed fee?
There's a twenty million dollar cap in there, but if it goes over twenty million, they get more money, so.
But are we sure that he reviewed the final contract, the one that was most recently listed? Or could it have been that he reviewed one of the many ones?
The comment was on the part of the Gilbain guys, who actually came back when I asked that question, and said, oh, no, ours is a fixed fee.
Right, but I mean, are we sure that the gentleman presenting reviewed the final contract as it was posted, or?
I don't know, I can't speak for him, but he basically?
That's the thing, because we posted a number of them, that's what I'm saying, so I don't know.
This wasn't one of the posted contracts. This was the guy from Gilbain who was responsible for the project saying, because I challenged him.
Right, I remember that, I remember that.
And he came back and said, they don't know, I mean, they're not going to get paid more if the price of steel goes up. Like I said, I'm fine if we put another wing on the building and they got to do more work, I got no problem with that.
Right.
But is that a correct read of the contract? If we just, if we go over twenty million, they're going to make more money?
I know what you're talking about, I got to scroll through.
I think it's a, well, a column.
I'm trying to find it.
That's why I'm wondering what? But that's why I'm wondering what part of the contract?
It's the A one thirty-four, it's?
Yeah, what this contract that's posted says at five point one one, it says if the work exceeds twenty million, then the constructed manager's fee shall be increased by one point seven five percent of the amount of the cost of the work exceeds twenty million.
Now, the good news is, it's only the increment, though, right? So if it goes to twenty-one million, you get one point seven five percent of the one million.
Of the increment.
Right, yeah.
Because?
But again, I don't understand, again, that twenty million, it could be because we put another wing on the building, it could be because the price of steel went up, and these guys at Gilbain didn't even lift another pencil because the price of steel went up, other than they knew they had to come to tell us that. What's, what happened to that?
Although they said the fixed, the fixed cost, when they did their estimates, that their cost is built in. Whatever their cost was, we would know. Of course, Dan wasn't here for that conversation, so we can't really?
I mean, they do have the fixed cost in there, and if the cost of work ended up going over twenty million, it does have, it does have that in there, based on how I'm reading it.
Yeah, that's what I read.
I don't know, I don't want to speak in a turn, I don't know necessarily what was in that sentence, meaning like, I don't know that would we ever approve work over twenty million anyways? Because all this has to be subject to the work that is actually going to get done. So if we're doing work over twenty million, if the board's taking action to approve work over twenty million, which essentially would be essentially changing scope of what we're doing, because you have to accept the bids anyways.
But that thing, if I hear it correctly, if the bids come in high to do the same scope of work that it's presently intended to be, they will make more money. If the bids come in over twenty million dollars, which the bids will come in over twenty million dollars.
I don't know enough of the breakdown, I think, I don't know, I don't know enough about the breakdown of the cost of the project and what other, what cost of work technically means. That's defined later, I just, off the top of my head, be able to reference that term. But I'm guessing the cost of the actual work won't be twenty million, because if you've got a cap of twenty-one point five, your design fees are going to be, you know, your design and management fees have got to be, I mean, ten-ish, ten percent of that anyways. You know, plus you've got owner costs and all that kind of stuff, so.
We have all the outwork, the twenty-one and a half includes all the outwork outside the building.
Yeah, so I have to review the estimates and see, like, how far away are we from the twenty million? Like, sometimes you have twenty-one point five million contract that you look at, but really, the construction part is only fifteen or something. So I don't, unfortunately, I don't know that data well enough yet to be able to speak.
So the question I have is, if we wanted to leverage the fact that we're going to meet on the seventh, does that give us enough time to set up the meeting? Does that give us enough time?
Sure, we just have a special meeting before the, we have a special meeting before the budget meeting.
Would that have, would that give enough time to, for the attorneys?
It's like two weeks.
It's two weeks, that's from time to time.
Well, I mean, it might be enough time for Len to, in his firm, to review the contract. I don't know if it's, Gilbain looks sufficient time.
Well, I think the first pass, I think the first pass right now is, because, look, as it stands today, our guys have looked at it and said, we're good with it.
Right.
Right? So the question to Len would be, someone who I think is knowledgeable, came forth with some objections that are at least worth understanding.
Could you look at him?
And Len may look at him, and, you know, Dan, I think he has some good responses to a couple of them already. Maybe Len's going to look at him and say, okay, you can make that concern, but here's why I don't worry about it. And we may not have to go back to the whole Gilbain and Click group.
Right, right, that's what I thought.
If our attorney looks at it and says it's okay, but I don't know, it sounds to me like it's?
We can do that.
All right, it's twenty million, I don't know that I feel like making a mistake here. And, I don't know, to me, that was actually a pretty valid?
Well, look, we've spent at least six months on the contract, so if we spend two more weeks, we spend two more weeks on the contract, and then we vote on it. And have Len do a review of Len's turn, and he knows Len, because Len is also counsel at sixty-eight, so.
Yeah, I mean, it could just be differences of opinion, and different tolerances for risk, or whatever.
Different experience basis, yeah.
That's fair, but to be honest, I guess I personally am feeling a need not to ignore it. If that makes sense. What do you guys think?
I think, looking at it in the two weeks' time, is a correct move to make, in my opinion. Yeah, that's all I feel about this. I think we certainly should take advantage of the work that Mr. Hasler did. And? One concern I have is, are we asking him to specifically?
No.
Okay, that's what I want.
No, and actually, what the feedback he gave us, and he will follow up in writing, we'll share that with Len, and have Len review those.
Unfortunately, what we probably need to do is look at the tape here quickly and get?
Yeah, I would not be waiting for him to write that up.
But that's okay, we'll probably have that, I'm guessing we'll probably have that tomorrow or the next day.
All right, so?
So I can let Len know tomorrow what's?
What I heard was, you know, I think that sometimes as a lawyer who's negotiating contracts, you're not always sure what the client exactly wants. So if the board is saying, we don't expect to pay more than the lump sum based upon this contract, and if it goes over because the price of steel has gone up or whatever, you don't get the extra one point seven five percent, then you got to make that clear to Dan, and then?
That's probably not even Len Heinz issue, that's?
Who's ever negotiating, because that language in there is not unusual. And if, but if that's the client's position, that, until you want, then it's got to be made clear.
I'm responding to that, because I specifically asked that question. And actually, the way it went was, the guy from Gilbain said, not me, my stuff's fixed. At which point, it was STR we were looking at, and Mike said he's willing to negotiate. And so that was kind of how it went down. Because we specifically said, you know, what's your incentive to come in under budget, okay?
Right, and so that's what I'm saying, is that sometimes that's the client, which is the board, has to make sure that those things that you decided on are in there, and make sure that?
I think they were certainly clear on negotiation.
Negotiated in that way, okay?
All right, they got it.
Yeah, the link's got it.
So let me do a quick sum, okay? So what we'll do is, we'll take whatever we have from our notes and whatever Len sends us. We'll share that with Len and his team there, ask them to review those things, give us some read on that. And then we'll bring that back on the seventh, and we'll see where we stand. We'll just have a special, what we have to do, because you're going to, you may vote on something that night, is we'll have a special board meeting, okay?
Yeah, well, I think we do it just before the budget.
Yeah, just before the budget, or we could actually do the special meeting, vote on that, and we could just put budget under that agenda, so we don't have to have two meetings, because you're not voting on the budget that night.
All right, let me just ask one other question on this, though, because the way this could go, let's just say, for example, we give Len and Company the entire list of things that we heard tonight, okay? And one scenario is Len and Company review it and say, I still think we're good. Okay, and that would be the report we would get with Len, okay? Are we willing to vote on it then, at that point? I mean, here's what I don't want to do, is I don't want to go back and forth and forth and back.
Right.
Now, I'm assuming that if there are things that Len is not good with, between now and the seventh, we'll negotiate those out, find a way to close those out, all right? We want to get this done. I'm assuming we can get that done with, say, Gilbain or whoever else it is. But at the end of the day, I think the next step would be, we're going to get a thumbs up from Len, and at that point, say, now we got to bring it back for another vote. Are you guys, are we all all right with that?
Yeah, I think we're at a disadvantage for not having him here to help. I mean, we could have probably handled it this evening, if Len's here, he's not, I think that's a perfect way to. But I think we need a motion, probably postpone it until April seventh, though, right?
Yeah, we have a motion on the table now to approve it, so all we have to do is reject the motion.
Now we just vote no.
Okay, you don't want to postpone it because?
And then administratively, we'll?
We'll just reject it.
We want to reject it, so we just withdraw, we'll just withdraw the motion.
Yeah, that would be?
Okay, withdraw.
Rick, should we withdraw the motion or vote on it as is?
No, I would withdraw.
Yes, you don't withdraw. What's that, withdraw, okay.
All right, I withdraw the motion to approve the LHS pool project.
We'll table that.
Yeah, seven.
Second?
I withdraw my second, or do you?
Yeah.
Okay.
So no action taken.
Welcome aboard.
Hold on. We're removing this up as an action item off the agenda, and there's been a motion to do that. We should have a second and vote on it, so that it's?
The remove?
So let me make sure, because you got a motion on the table to approve it. It's been seconded.
And I?
And I thought that was a motion to?
I have to withdraw.
So we can make another motion?
Now we're going to vote it through.
And to withdraw it from the agenda, isn't that what I heard?
Yes.
Yes, all right, so who's going to make that motion?
Are you sure you don't want to do a motion to postpone consideration until August seventh? Well, I mean, because at that time, it doesn't get voted down, it gets postponed, it puts a time, and we're going to bring it back on the table. So, I mean, we can do a couple of motions, you can do a motion to table it, but that's a little, or a motion to postpone until August seventh.
Or just withdraw?
I mean, withdraw, I mean, withdraw then, Karen has to withdraw her second. I mean, there's a little bit more parliamentary to withdraw, I mean, I think.
No, we already did it.
I think you're right.
We did it, we did it wrong. I mean?
No, let's go, go ahead.
Matt can't second a motion to withdraw. The person who made the second has to second it. And I think a motion to postpone is a better parliamentary, in my opinion, but again, I defer to the attorney.
So Kevin, can I just, but there is an open motion on the table, so?
But a motion to postpone is a privileged motion to, again, we have to vote on it. We all have to vote to postpone it. We all would vote to postpone it.
But we just sort of add that on to the motion that's already out?
It needs a second, first off, it would need a second, and then we'd need to be voted upon by the body. But that way, the motion that you two make doesn't get no vote.
Yeah.
And I think that's our whole goal.
It's our whole goal.
I mean, again, if you can put a way to withdraw it, go ahead, but I, I didn't hear a way to withdraw it. So again.
Okay, tell us what to do. Several good actions.
I think we go with Kevin's. All right, so is there a motion?
Withdraw if you want to.
You figure out.
Is there, is there a motion to postpone the vote on the contract until August seventh?
I make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
So should it be something, I can second it if.
Second.
Yeah, it's the, it's the motion.
All right, okay, any discussion of that? All right, now we're hearing a roll call.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, and then the other one is, so it's postponed, it's postponed.
Yeah, it's postponed, it was.
All right, tell us.
Wow, I've never had such a home, exciting, first time.
Not to get so technical, when we come back, that motion that we made is seconded, do we just have discussion and vote on it? Or we got to remake the motion?
I think you could just redo the.
You bring it off.
Yeah, okay, all right, Kevin, remind us of the things.
No, we'll get it off.
Okay.
Thanks, all right, next, ten of FY eighteen, ten of the budget updates. Okay, this is, this is really brief, we met last Tuesday, the eighteenth, for almost three hours, and did an initial review, overview of the tentative budget, and it's just that, it's a tentative budget. Dan has presented visually a number of very easy to follow scenarios from actual to actual, budget to budget, scenarios moving forward, still doing some analysis of the numbers that ended last year and some comparative data. We'll dig into that deeper on August seventh, as we continue that discussion. I think we had a very lively and productive discussion. We also highlighted, as we did in one on one, a number of the internal steps that we've taken, including not filling four district level positions over the past year and a half or two years, moving forward in the neighborhood of three hundred ninety seven, three hundred ninety thousand, maybe almost four hundred thousand dollars, moving forward, flatlining the budget that we, part of the budget that we control beyond salaries and benefits, et cetera. So we'll review those things again, and get into a deeper analysis of the budget. Once again, there is a lot of uncertainty at the state right now. As I described earlier, there is no, there is no funding formula for public schools, or no new funding formula for public schools in Illinois next year. And so even though we have a budget, and hundreds of millions of dollars and more are going to go into public education, there is not a vehicle to do that until the legislature passes something and the governor signs the bill. And the current mechanism passed the House and the Senate, again, is being held in the legislature right now, and we don't know if and when it's going to be sent to the governor, the governor has said he will either mandatorily veto that, or he will veto that. So whether there's a compromise in the offing in the next few weeks before schools open, we don't know. But we would also be impacted by that, even though the majority of our funding comes from our local constituents because of the breadth and depth of our tax base here. We still do get money from the state, and we are still owed, as every school district is, two out of four categorical payments from last year, categoricals are transportation, special education, things of that nature, that we still haven't gotten from last year yet, so. And a property tax breeze is still a possibility, we have factored those numbers in, so we're going to have to look at all of those potential scenarios, because honestly, nobody knows where we're going to end up right now, at the state level, as it relates to public education right now, I think is a fair statement. So anyway, August seventh, seven o'clock, right here at District Office, will be our budget. And if any, any of you want to make some additional comments about our first meeting, Dan, I, I, I think I can say for everyone, you did a great job in, in summarizing and clarifying data in a very user-friendly way. I think it was certainly all fall to the board and to us moving forward. And then we're going to continue to package that first quarterly, but then hopefully monthly, so we have a current run rate we can see where we're at during the school year, I think, to the board, and we, your colleagues are very appreciative of that as well, so.
Okay.
Good job, thank you. Next on the agenda, rental labor rates for FY two thousand eighteen.
Can we make a motion that we approve the rental labor rates for FY two thousand eighteen as presented and previously discussed?
Second.
Discussion, these are, these are standard rate adjustments to cover the cost of employees and or contractors that we hire for rental, so some of the rents are facilities. Brenner said anything we need to add?
Uh, no, I don't think so, Jim.
Any other comments, questions? All right, roll call.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Okay, we have a few, a couple of bid recommendations here. First, the Brainerd Memorial, that actually came in under our expectations, lower than the stipend we had anticipated, so. We have a motion to say.
A motion to approve the bid recommendations for Brainerd Memorial and the taxi transportation.
We have to say who it is.
There's several.
Yeah.
So a motion to approve the Brainerd Memorial.
For how much? For Stupi Construction, right?
For Stupi Construction for thirty nine thousand. And we just want to point out, we want to point out that that came in at thirty nine thousand, including the contingency. We were really expecting that to be closer to fifty, so that did come in well under budget with a construction company that we've done a lot of work with and has a very, very reputable firm.
It's thirty nine thousand.
Amount of thirty nine thousand plaque. Plaque and an addition.
The plaque would be in addition to that.
So we had a motion, did we have a second?
No, I didn't hear a second yet. Second?
Just to clarify, Ellen had the vote, Ellen ended up making the vote, he kind of said a motion too, so I just.
No, I just gave it to him.
That's mine.
Mac maybe.
No.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
Question? Go ahead.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Boy, my committee thing here is just complicated all night. Okay, next one, as the special services taxi transportation contract, which we have to redo.
I make a motion that we accept the bid for American Taxi of Mount Prospect, Illinois, for the transportation of District one twenty eight special needs students for two thousand seven, two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year, in the amount of four dollars per student for share ride. Second.
Any questions or comments? This was discussed earlier in the committee meeting. Okay, roll call, please.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thank you, next on the agenda is the School Messenger Emergency Communications Contract. This is a system that facilitates outbound calls, emails, that type of thing, in emergency scenarios where we have to reach out to the community, students, that type of thing, so. Contract was reviewed earlier in committee, so can we have a motion?
I move to accept the School Messenger Emergency Communication Contract in the amount of six thousand thirty four dollars. School Messenger.
School Messenger.
I'm sorry, yeah, School Messenger.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comment, question?
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
And last on the Facilities and Finance Agenda here is the Midland Paper State Pricing Contract. So can we have a motion?
I move to accept the Midland Paper State Pricing Contract that's discussed previously for fifty one thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars.
Do you want to have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions, this was reviewed earlier, I think we're kind of dragging here.
Add, add again.
Oh, yes, right. All right.
I've never seen.
We have a.
Several voters.
Rudy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Aye.
And Jim, I have one other, I just, we just received a text message from Scott Luce, who's with Mark Koopman over at the Plan Commission of Village in Libertyville. Our plan was approved unanimously with the two conditions as named in the document, to move ahead as projected on the LHS pool. That will need Village Trustee approval, so that will be the next step, and I think our next meeting is in two weeks of the Village Board. So Scott noted, great job by Mark and team, of course, by Scott as well, too humble to say that. And a couple of our parents, swim parents also attended that meeting, so we're appreciative of that. So that's good news, and thanks to Plan Commission of the Village.
Back to you, Dan, we got to get the contracts.
That concludes the Facilities and Finance.